Committee on Public Works and Transportation will now come to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselor Dionne? Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah.
Chairman Cadiz?
Here. Counselor Dionne will be joining us shortly. She's just running a few minutes late. With that, we'll get started. Item number one is citizen input. Oh, I'm sorry. Just put that under. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Item number one is citizen input. Is there any citizen input? Seeing none. Item number two is the minutes from July 20th, 2021.
Motion to accept.
There's a motion made by Counselor Pelletier. I'll second that. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. So vote a motion carries. Item number three is in order for 248 Hancock Street for the removal of 23 feet of curbing in addition to an existing 23-foot driveway for a total of 46 feet at 248 Hancock Street. This was referred on August 17th, 2021. Is there anybody in attendance to speak on this matter? Do you have questions? Counselor Pelletier?
Well, I went to the property and around the vaults are already in. They don't have a curbstone. There was no curbstone to remove. But actually, she's got two driveways and they were marked. One of them was marked with white. I guess the footage that they needed. And it looked like it's been repaid. So, I mean, she put in for curb cut. There's actually no curb cut. So what do we do from here? She's already got the turnaround. And they're not here tonight to talk about it. I mean, is it legal? Is it right? Right next to them, they got one as well. So I don't know what the story is there. I mean, I don't know if they applied or didn't apply, but, you know, would like to, well, Mr. Perry probably can clear that up, but it is done. Because that one up there.
So, Ms. Perry, is there curbing on Hancock Street at all?
So, there's curbing on Hancock Street itself, but at this particular address, they did put in for a curb cut permit. They were told that they would have to wait for the council approval. I think there may have been a language barrier between the resident and the office itself. So, to Counselor Pelletier's point, what he's trying to say is that the job is already done. They went ahead, they cut the curb, and they put their driveway in. So, at this point, it'd be up to this committee and the council. There'd be two options. So, I mean, we could send them a fine. Normally, when they go ahead and do something without a permit, it's a double fine. So that would be 250, or 300 rather. I think it's 150 normally. Or we could make them restore it back and then request it again. But I think that might be a bit excessive, so.
Well, was there a curb there or not?
There was.
There don't seem to be a curb on that side.
Well, I, again, I've spoken to Mr. Silver about this particular piece. Maybe there wasn't a curb, but they put in for the extra driveway. I could look into that for you, Counselor. But the fact of the matter is, it's done now, so this would be a, you know, hindsight thing, as far as the approval.
Just to, Freddie Nassar, Nassar pulled it out. No permits. I made him put it back in. And he applied, and then they took it out again. And I'm not saying that's the way to go. I'm just trying to say, hey, the job is done.
Yeah.
Did they pull a permit to pull the curb? Do you know if there was a curb on that side?
They pulled the permit, the request.
Did you see the curb?
I have not seen the curb.
Well, that's what I mean. The next door don't have a curb. I don't know if that side's got a curb on that side.
I believe it did. That's what the request was for. Mr. Silver went out, inspected it, and in my conversation with him, he didn't mention anything about there not being a curb. So, I mean, I'd have to put my eyes on it, Counselor. I don't want to try to give you information that I don't have 100% accuracy.
Well, you know, we have two choices here, I guess. First of all, I'd like to know if there was a curb. And then, second, is if they've done it and it's not right, maybe, I mean, we just can't say let it go all the time. They've done something wrong, you've got to give them a little something to say, don't do it again. So the other people next door down the road are going to say, well, they got it. They never, they never pulled a permit, or they pulled it, they pulled a curbstone, and they shouldn't have pulled it till we let them know. That's what they applied for. That's what we brought it here for, to make sure everything was all right. Now, we had the one on Chicago Street. We'll deal with that later. She's got a curb. We know she's got a curb.
Yes, sir.
And, I don't know what's going to happen with that one, but we're going to deal with this one first.
So, Ms. Perry, it just looks like it's a Cape Cod burn that was along that side. I'm not sure that there was actually granite curbing, but.
Oh, is that the one?
Yeah, it's a Cape Cod burn. That's correct, Counselor. It is a Cape Cod burn, Counselor. So they would have had to remove that in order to put their driveway entrance. So, in essence, that would be a curb.
Yeah.
That's what that would be, we would consider on that particular street. And again, that's why I brought up the fine situation, and we haven't issued that yet, I felt. With the situation being what it was, it was worth getting the council's input first before we acted to see which route you wanted to go.
Okay.
I do think it was an honest mistake, though. I do think there was a language barrier with the residents. I can't speak, say that 100%, but that's up to you.
Did they get a notice? What does it mean tonight? Yes. I mean, the language barrier or what? I mean, I mean, she should have been here tonight.
I can't argue with that, Counselor.
I mean, that's what we come out for, to try to straighten this out, and we can find out what happened. Well, we've got a little more information now. Cape Cod burn is not a curb, but it is.
A barrier between the property and the street.
So, just to bring, Mr. Dionne, I went over and the job is already done. And I didn't think there was any curb there, but he says there were Cape Cod curb, which is a tar curb there.
Well, like a burn?
Yes, a burn.
So she, she already done the job. She already done the job. Well, you can see the white line there. That's what she done. So what do we do now? He says, well, you can make her put it back, or you can fine her, or whatever the case may be. But people down the road are going to say, well, she got hers done, you know? So, you know, it's up to this committee, I guess, to decide what, what do we do.
So can I just make a recommendation that we table this matter? Just have John or the engineering department go out there and just kind of review the work that was done to make sure, number one, it meets the standards of the city, and if we still have an issue, my own personal take is ordinance requires a double fine if you begin work prior to the approval process. So I think we should move forward in that direction regardless, but I think the conversation should be had as to whether or not it was done properly or there's other work that needs to be done.
If I may, Mr. Silver already went out and inspected it after the fact. So he is aware, I was aware, that this had happened. He has inspected it. The work was done correctly. So if you wanted to expediate it, expedite it rather, we could, we could talk about issuing that fine, or you can make another recommendation.
Well, right now, you know, maybe it's good that we go back and maybe talk to her, say, hey, what happened? You didn't come to the meeting, and you may face a fine because you've done the job without permissions. So I would make a motion to table and try to get it rectified as soon as we can. And that's my motion.
So what I would do then is I would reach out to the homeowners, speak to them, see if they'd be willing to attend a future meeting. If they're not willing to, then I'll make sure that they understand that a fine most likely will be levied.
Motion to table was made by Counselor Pelletier. It was seconded by Counselor Dionne. No discussion on table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. So vote a motion carries. Item number four is a curb cut for 471 Center Street for the removal of four feet of curbing in addition to an existing 18-foot driveway for a total of 22 feet at 471 Center Street, referred to the committee on September 14th, 2021. So, Mr. Borges, this was referred to committee because there was an objection to the curb cut. So I'm just going to open it up to councilors to see if there's any questions with regard to the curb cut. Counselor Pelletier?
I would rather see the opposition coming down first.
Want to do that? You can stay there. It's all right. We're just going to, Ms. Perry, can you just have the mic shared? Oh, yeah. Oh, I apologize.
You can come down, right?
Yeah, you can come down, or you can stay there. Yeah. Okay. Would you like one? Mike, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Name is Michael Gonzales. Address 463 Center Street. What I had the issue was some of the mathematical calculations that I had come up with. Now, if you take a look at the blueprints, you take a look at the houses in red, and they have no driveways, right? Take a look at the houses in blue, they have a driveway, but they're only capable of two vehicles. So houses in green, there you go, Mr. Borges, just fact-check everything. I'd like for you guys to, I'd like for you guys to also calculate it. I've been over this material a few times. So this seems to be the issue that we're having. The houses in green have sufficient amount of parking for all the residents. Now, if you add up all those dwellings and then you eliminate one unit for the houses in blue who have the driveway, that leaves 28 units with no parking that have to use public parking. So when I started calculating the curb length, I came up with 688 feet of linear curb. So what I did was, I took 28 units and I did one vehicle per unit at what engineering and traffic proposes, which is 20 feet per vehicle. That gives me 560 vehicle, linear footage of vehicle. So because you have to stay 20 feet off of every curb for emergency access, that's 60 feet. So you subtract that from 688, gives you 628. So you subtract the 560 of vehicle length, and that gives us 68 feet linear footage of curb. That's scavenging every linear footage of curb. So this seems to be the issue of parking because we only have three available spots. That is for drop-off and pickup time. That's also for neighborhood guests. And I'll mention that Mr. Borges also had two vehicles there that technically we only have one available spot. So when you have an event in the neighborhood, like the school, the church, all of that, this is the issues we run into. We have healthcare workers who come home 3:00 a.m., they're parking around the block. We have also elderly who park around the block, one block away to get to their homes. They also need handicap signs. So we need to preserve the fact that there are no handicap signs on the street for kids who are under the spectrum. Also, when you look at driveway openings, every driveway opening on Center Street besides the school and Mr. Borges is under 16 feet. Now, you have 22 feet and a half, and then you have a 24-foot. Those are two driveways that have no curb dividing them. Now, I say, if those two driveways wanted to be extended and everyone wanted to extend their driveways, where do the residents park? And then if we apply the handicap signs, where do the residents park? And I'm at bare minimum here. I'm saying there's one vehicle per unit. Every, usually every unit has at least two vehicles. I know I have two vehicles. If you have a husband and a wife, that's two vehicles. If you have a kid above driving age, that's also another vehicle. So there is no reason why we have to suffer because you guys advocate for a box truck. There's no reason why. This is the reason why the city has zoning laws, correct, is so commercial vehicles and businesses do not impede in residential areas. So you guys come up here and advocate for a box truck, which I don't understand because it's not on the application. If the box truck was on the application, then we can have logistics on a nine-foot wide box truck getting through an 18-foot opening and also turn radiuses. So what I'm not comprehending is why everybody's advocating here for, for this to get cut when.
Mr. Borges, just to correct you, I know you've said it a couple of times, so I don't think anybody's advocating. The only person advocating.
Well, no, I'd like to reference three hours, three hours and 51 minutes into September 14th meeting and the input that was given. He doesn't have a six or an eight family. It's a four dwelling. There's eight parking spots.
Just hear me out for one second, though. And I meant Mr. Gonzales, not Mr. Borges. I was looking at Mr. Borges's paperwork. So Mr. Borges is the only individual at the table right now advocating for his curb cuts. So we had your objection.
Sure, sure.
Which was heard. I know Counselor Pelletier went to the location at the time of the meeting.
And he had input.
So typically, the standard protocol is that anytime there is any type of objection, it automatically comes here for us to hear the situation. So that's why it's here. So I don't want you to get the opinion that, you know, the members at the table are advocating in any way. We're just trying to figure out what the request is, what the objections are, and to see if there's any middle ground or whether or not we think it needs to be approved or not approved.
Can I finish up?
Yes, you can.
So I just wanted to clarify some of the input that you did in referencing back three hours and 51 minutes in. He's got a four dwelling.
Excuse me?
Four family.
Yeah.
Not a six or an eight. You said a six or an eight.
He's got a four.
He's got eight parking spots there.
That's terrific.
Terrific. That was engineered a few years ago and approved by the city zoning, which there was no issue with, with the entrance. Now, the question I ask is, how is, the application says to allow additional parking. How is the elimination of four feet of curb going to add additional parking when there's no increase to the square footage of the lot itself?
You know the answer to that. We answered it.
No, there is no answer because the square footage is there already.
We talked about it with you. He parks his truck in front of it. He parks the truck there for the simple reason, the four foot, somebody would park their car right against the edge of the curb, and he couldn't get in. So what he done, he parked his truck, and he left it there because the neighbors wouldn't comply with coming back a little bit to let him go in the yard. It's his yard. He's got eight cars off the street. He wants to get his truck in there. He's going to take two cars, two cars off the street.
No, you ruined the buffer.
Okay. Can we just, can we just hold on for one second? So I just want to make sure, number one, this is my subcommittee, right? So we're going to remain quadrille, okay? So let's be professional, both sides. We're here to get what your concerns are. We're not here to interrogate any of the councilors. So just tell us what your concerns are, and we can go forward. We'll ask Mr. Borges his, his side of the story, what he's looking to do, and we'll clarify things. I just want to keep it professional as we're moving forward, that's all.
Yes, sir. I also wanted to add that you do ruin the buffer because before Mr. Borges parked those trucks there and moved into the neighborhood, we used to fit five vehicles at an average car length there. And the average car length is 14.7 feet. Now, if, if you want to calculate that 89 feet, right, and you divide that, you can fit five vehicles there. Now, now what happens when you cut that four feet is you're telling me that every resident in the city is going to have a truck, and we're going to have just bad parking days all the time. So he just moved the second vehicle that was across the street, what, a month ago? So it's been there for four years, and for the first time, we had four vehicles fit there instead of three. So this is what I mean when, when I say you advocate because, Mr. Pelletier, with all due respect, you don't park on that street, so you don't suffer. My pregnant wife had slipped on ice carrying groceries from up the street. There's a woman with a child who has a hyperactive disorder. And crossing Broadway, if you guys think you have a Bay Street speeding problem, you should probably take a look at Broadway from middle to Globe Street. It's a pretty wide straightaway. And when you're on that crosswalk, people don't stop. She told me the story of her son almost getting hit because she had her hands full. There's no reason for that. We have plenty of parking. There's no reason to keep two vehicles there for four years. You have 13 off-street parking spots already. How greedy do you want to get? I just don't understand it.
All right. Okay. So I don't, I don't want to make it too personal again. So I think, do we have any specific questions for the person who has an objection?
Well, I, yes, I have one question. So you just referenced 14.8 feet per vehicle?
That's the average car length in America.
So that's the average car length?
But I'm going 20.
But all your numbers on paper are based on 20 feet. So I just need you to clarify for me.
Traffic and zoning told me that, but I also went to East Main and South Main, which is a block away, and I found no painted lines at 20 feet. They were all at 18, 18 and a half.
Okay.
So I've done my due diligence on this stuff.
No, no, my question was clarification because you, in your statement just now, you said 14.8. Now you're telling me you don't see a parking space over 18, but all your calculations here are based on 20. So I was just trying to understand exactly what the calculation is we're going to use.
Because when I came to City Hall, they would always shun me away from this, from this particular issue. And always, everybody that I came and seen at City Hall told me, we see no issue with this. This is going to pass regardless. And engineering, when I went to engineering, that 89-foot section of curb, they had nothing on public record. And what they did is they went on Google Maps on the satellite image and came up with 131 linear feet of curb compared to 89.
Okay.
Is that how we're doing engineering now? Is, is that the logistics we're coming up with?
So let me just finish my question, please. So if we deduct two feet from your 20 for every unit, it's 56 feet. Added to the 68 would be 124 feet of extra available curb. Because you measured, you said the city doesn't have any parking space over 18.
Correct.
So we would need to take two feet off of your 20 to make them all 18-foot spaces, just to get the numbers straight. That's all I'm trying to do.
The numbers, the numbers are based on what they justified this curb cutting.
Okay. So 56 added to the, to the 68 would be 126 extra feet of available curb.
But they're justifying it as 20-foot parking spots to, to eliminate the curb. That's what they justify it as.
Ms. Perry, can I, can I just ask you, how does traffic, how wide does traffic do the parking spots?
We go 20 feet because there are all different kinds of vehicles. Vans, there are trucks.
Can you just, I'm sorry, can you just look to the mic for the folks out there?
We do 20 feet, and we do have metered spots that are all 20 feet.
Okay.
Being because of the size of the vehicles. You can't do a space for 18 feet when a van gets in there, and that's why we have a lot of issues, that they block people's driveways, obstructing it, because you have these large trucks parking on public ways, vans, utility trucks, you have all kinds of vehicles. You cannot do 18 feet. The average is 20 feet.
So I measured East Main and South Main. If you guys would like to go down and.
I'm not saying that there's some, I'm not, those meters have been up for over 30 years. So I'm not saying that some spaces are not 18 feet. You've got to remember, many years ago, there were smaller vehicles. Many, many years ago, they used to do handicap spots at 18 feet. We had to change it to 20 because now you had people buying larger vehicles. So you have to accommodate the vehicles that you have out there.
But may I add to?
Mrs. Row, excuse me. So this gentleman is asking for four feet. In your estimation, does four feet impact the neighborhood to the extent that this gentleman feels it does?
Based on reviewing curb cuts that go through the traffic board, four feet would not. Four feet, with the gentleman, and I haven't seen his paperwork or anything like that, four feet is just, we have a lot of people that would love to, to add a little four feet when they have larger vehicles because people park so close to the edge of their driveways. We get calls almost every day because of the way the curbing is and people park so close to it. If they have a large vehicle that they want to put in their driveway, they're having a hard time putting those vehicles in the driveway. My, my opinion and based on reviewing curb cuts, four feet is, is really nothing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perry, that, again, that four feet, would, how greatly would it impact the number of cars that are parking there now?
So from the engineering department's standpoint, it wouldn't affect it. As Ms. Row said, you'd need 20 feet. So if you're taking four feet, you're not using a spot. And if you're taking more vehicles off the street, then I would imagine that might help as well.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Counselor Pelletier?
I'd like to hear of, I've got more to add, but.
Okay.
Mr. Borges.
Mr. Borges, you want to just tell us, again, the request for it? You weren't here at the council meeting. Counselor Pelletier did speak a little bit, I guess, with regards to the meeting that the three of you had on site.
So obviously, as everyone has the plans, and I have pictures so I can show around. Long story short, I am asking for four feet. I did measure it. I made sure that obviously I wasn't taking any parking away from the street, from the way they require the 20 feet. Here, I can pass these around. That's how I make obvious. So the other reason why, too, obviously, besides the vehicles, when it snows, there is times that, because you know, you can't see the curb. Obviously, that's the no parking side when it does snow. It's the fire hydrant side. So there have been times that I have hit it, and a buddy of mine that plows for me has hit it as well. A lot of the tenants now have gotten better, but in the beginning, they were all hitting it because obviously they just follow the existing width of the driveway. So that was kind of a little issue, too. Mike is right, we didn't do it sooner, but essentially, we were still doing the rehab of the house, so.
Questions to Mr. Borges?
If you can clarify, they told you to put, fuck, eight cars in the yard?
Oh, yeah, two per spot.
So that's eight cars times 20. You've got 160 feet there that, that they're not parking on that particular street.
Essentially, yeah.
And then you've got the truck with another two. So you've got 180 feet in your backyard, you know, so, you know, we're looking for four feet. You actually got, and then you told me you're taking two cars out of the way. You took one truck already.
Yeah.
And you're going to take the other truck, which is going to leave a spot that's open. And even though they're still going to park up to the edge of the curb, it's going to be all set?
Yeah, essentially, I mean, I measured it with tape measuring and engineer, and the engineer, we actually, because essentially, I don't know how exactly, if they go from the start of the curb or the very edge of the curb. So we measured 87 feet, and obviously, 87 feet only allows four vehicles. Take the four feet, 83 feet, that will only still allow four vehicles to make it comfortably so everyone can obviously get out and do what they need to do.
Would you agree to make sure that the other two trucks that were parked there for many years, I guess, that they won't be there anymore with the four-foot cut?
They will not be there.
Isn't there a law on that?
What?
On leaving a vehicle on a, along a curb for so long?
Look, when I hit this, discuss that, he left it there. Did you call the cops and say, hey, the truck's been there for a long time?
Is he doing the, the residents a service now? Is, is that what it is? Because he's been a disservice.
He's doing it now by getting rid of them two trucks off the street to give you two more parking space for four foot. If you can't understand that, I mean, that is not bad. That is not bad.
Point of information, point of information.
Counselor Dionne, again, I just, I get everybody's getting worked up. I just wanted to keep two, I don't want to get on all the issues, whether or not commercial trucks should be on the, on the street, if cars need to be moved within so many, like, I understand that. The point that we, the point that brings us here is whether or not a curb cut should be, should be issued. So, let's try to keep it to the issue of the curb cut. Counsel Deon, point of information.
My point of information simply was gonna be to have that question answered. If a legally registered vehicle can remain on a street at length, Mrs. Farrar?
I don't want to say that. No, go ahead.
As long as the vehicle is insured and registered, it can. We do ask if, like, if neighbors call and say, hey, it's been sitting there for two weeks or three weeks, we do investigate who owns it to make sure that the person does live there. And we ask them to move the vehicle whenever they can. But we can't tow it, because it's legally registered and insured.
Thank you.
And legally parked.
Commercial trucks?
Commercial trucks, it's gotta be, it cannot be on a public way between eleven PM and seven AM, but it has to be a two-ton.
Two-ton.
So, the officer would have to go at nighttime, run the plate, check the registration to see what the tonnage is, and then tag it.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, I did want to add, um, to his estimations with the eighty-seven feet, and once you eliminate that four feet, uh, also, the resident, um, on the other end of that section of curb, if they decide to extend their driveways as well, um, I don't, I don't think that they can do the sixteen feet. Just because it, I don't, I, I think it might impede, and also-
I'm sorry, so on, on the-
So, at the bottom section of that eighteen, eight, what I have is listed as eighty-nine feet. That, that driveway is at thirteen. Um, so, if they decide to extend, he, he would be taking their, uh, extension. Also, if we were to add a driveway, what, what would happen then, you know?
So, Mr. Borges, I'm gonna ask you a question. Do you need the four feet, or is it two feet, three feet?
Essentially, it would put back in line with the existing driveway. So, it would be a lot more, it would make more sense for the-
On the four foot, when you say, bring it back in, so it brings it back in line, sheet four?
Yeah, so it, it matches the existing line that is already, uh, for the driveway. So, second to last one.
And also, I'll mention that, I'm not the only one complaining. There were nineteen signatures also on that petition.
It was forty-two, I'm not sure.
Yeah, how many are your residents? I mean, you, you hold on to street parks. These people park on the street. Your people don't. That's the difference. You know, the people who signed it are the ones who park on the street. And you cannot go around, also, you cannot go around, um, holding people for ransom for a public parking spot in order for return for a signature. Because I do have a witness who had this conversation with Mr. Borges, that if he signed his signature, um, if he, if he signed his petition, that he would eliminate the curb. And if he didn't, then the trucks would stay. So, when I look in the-
I appreciate it.
When I look in the dictionary for a word that fits that, that's, that's extortion. I don't think you can hold public domain for ransom.
Uh, we're all set with the two of you. The council will now make the determination. I've been more than lenient going back and forth. I just, I don't wanna-
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel, as well?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we give him the four-feet extension. I think it'd make it, uh, much better, uh, because he's taking the two trucks off the street. And it's certainly gonna make it easier for him to get the access to, uh, his parking space in the yard. And I don't think four feet is gonna hurt anybody, especially when he's giving up the two trucks that he left there for a long, a long time. With that, I'd make the motion that we grant four feet.
Motion to grant four feet was made by Counsel Palter. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Perry, first?
You can, yeah.
We seem to come across this quite a bit, where curbs extend into driveways.
Yeah.
Is there a particular reason why this happens? Because it seems to me, if a driveway is put in, the person received permission to put in the driveway, or that's the assumption. So, you would think the driveway would match the opening. But yet, we keep finding situations where we have this extra four feet. I mean, we have the same situation on Chicago Street.
Yeah. I, I think if you were to travel the city, you'd probably find a lot of those. Um, it's something I think we may be able to mention to site plan review, right? So, and that's something they can look at, existing openings and how big, how wide the driveways can be, or if there should be a curb cut that's, that's requested as the, the, the build is actually going on. Uh, that's something I can talk to Mr. Kenny about. Um, but to logically try to explain why that would happen all over the city, I don't have an answer for that. Sometimes you'll have a new build on an old property, uh, and they'll lay out the driveway in a different, different way in anticipation to get a curb cut and, and widen it. Um, things of that nature may happen.
Except in this case, the driveway is above, is right against the house.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, logically, you would think if the driveway is this wide, the opening is this wide. So, I think with that, I would second the motion.
Motion to approve, uh, four-foot curb cut was made by Counsel Palter, seconded by Counsel Deon. Discussion? Just one, uh, point of discussion before we, we take a vote. So, we are certain, and I know the calculations would, would indicate that by giving four feet, we're not losing any parking spots whatsoever. It doesn't create any issues, um, in terms of the neighborhood or anything like that. Okay, because I, I can appreciate and recognize, you know, especially living in the south ends uh, for a number of years and having off-street parking, how difficult it, it becomes and challenging, uh, it is. And unfortunately, you know, there are just drivers out there who are not considerate of parking and where they should be aligning their cars. And it just, you know, obviously, the various, um, uh, widths of the car kind of don't lend themselves when they park in the middle to allow for the appropriate number of vehicles to be parked on the side. So, with, with that being said, um, on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted motion carries. Item number five is, uh, a twenty-five-foot curb removal in addition to an existing twenty-one point nine-foot driveway, which will be closed for a total of twenty-five feet at fifty-three California Street. This was referred to committee on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there anybody here for the curb cut? You folks want to come down? Uh, whichever you prefer, but if you want to come around, that's fine. How many objectors were there? One, one objector, okay. Sarah, any questions? Counsel Palter?
You're looking to, tonight I have the curb cut, is that?
Yes, I am the owner of the California, the street, and I came last, last May with, uh, my neighbor. So, the my neighbor was the opponent, but he didn't, he didn't know the plants. So, last, last Sunday, I showed him the plants. So, he's, he's done the my garage's gonna be all the way in. That's why, why he been worried. So, now, he gave me the okay. So, I don't know, you wanna call him and come in here?
Ms. Bouchard, I'm Ms. Bouchard, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Bouchard, can you come down?
I spoke with him, I have my plant here, you can show him again.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bouchard, if you can just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Arthur Bouchard. I live at sixty-seven California Street.
Thank you.
Next door to, uh, Mr. Estralla.
Thank you, Ms. Bouchard. Ms. Palter?
You guys are neighbors, right? But originally, you were against it? You still against it? Okay.
Against what?
The curb cut.
I'm against it.
No, he is.
No, he's the applicant.
Oh, you want it.
He's the applicant, so he's, 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 he's not against it.
He wants it, you don't. Okay, I got you.
No, it's not that I don't.
Yeah, all right, well, state your-
I'm not opposed to it. The only thing with me was concerned about rainwater, because there's a lot of land between this house and my house. And it's a, it's a steep slope, like, you know, California Street. And when it rains really hard, it's like a, a river going down the street.
Yeah.
So, my concern was water coming from his driveway into my basement, because I have an old existing, uh, an old stone basement. That's over a hundred years old.
So, Ms. Estralla, do you have an existing driveway?
Yes.
That's already, are, are you putting it in a driveway now?
Yeah, I, I have an existing one, but the times I do my garage, I gotta close that one and jump to the other side of the house.
Now, in terms of, Ms. Perry, have you, have you looked at the runoff on the stormwater?
So, oh, the stormwater piece, I, I haven't. I mean, but he is closing a twenty-one point nine foot, I believe, on the west side of the house.
And just moving it?
And moving it over to the east side, correct?
Yes, alright.
I, I, you know, Mr. Silver Inspector-
Is, is this, is the slope somewhat similar, or, I mean, I, I'm not looking for an engineering study on the slopes, but-
Slope some, but what the, we plan is make the driveway, not the, the gotta go to his house, because we have the gable into his house. I thought that before make the plant, you know?
Yeah.
And the water's gotta come into the, the street side and the backside. And then I got a car with the pipe or something like that and travel to the street side. That's what I explained to him. I have, I grabbed the plant with him, I saw last Sunday, and I have no water go to his house. I told him, if something has happened, just call me, I can fix it, or something like that. That's, I can do the best I can, you know? But I don't know what his is.
Ms. Perry, we gonna say something?
No, I was just saying, I haven't seen his plans with the downspouts and whatnot. Um, if you have any, yours, okay with it, then.
Uh, he did show me plans. Uh, I don't know about the downspouts or anything like that, but he did explain to me where he's gonna make sure that whatever he does is not gonna affect my property as far as rain coming in towards my house from the slope, because that's my main concern. And, and as long as everything is correct as far as, like, the distance between this garage and my house.
Ms. Farran, since you're in the audience, can I, can I just ask you a quick question with regards to the, uh, stormwater runoff? What's the, what's the requirement?
So, within the building code, there's a requirement that no, uh, no property should impact neighbor, neighboring property, uh, within their, uh, within the, with runoff from their property. Uh, so, that's within the IBC, the International Building Code. Um, so, the building department has jurisdictions over that. Uh, planning and us, whenever there's issues out there, also, uh, assist with that. Um, so, i- it's tough to say, you know, without looking at some type of design or anything, on how runoff would, would go from the new driveway or, or prospective driveway onto some other property, or how it may convey out to the street. Uh, you know, uh, just listening to this, there may be ways with, uh, possibly putting a Cape Cod berm on one side or some type of, uh, or possibly pitching the driveway correctly. I haven't seen the site, I don't know the area, but there may be some way to do that. Um, you know, I don't know if, uh, it would be something that you would, would want to recommend to have an engineer overlook that, uh, to see that that doesn't, uh, that, that doesn't affect the neighboring property. You know, it's tough with the driveway in a situation like this, doesn't necessarily go through the full site plan review process, because it doesn't require a building permit. It's not over thirty parking spaces, so.
So, you're earning your money today, and I appreciate that. Uh, so, I guess, just to kind of streamline this, I know we've got a couple of other items, but I, I think if there are no issues, and I'm hearing Mr. Borges not having necessarily an issue with the curb cut, uh, that we grant a curb cut with the stipulation that it just gets reviewed from the building department and potentially, um, sewer, water, sewer departments, just to, to make sure that the runoff, stormwater runoff is, is adequate, and it's not gonna impact neighbors. Is that a good compromise?
The thing is, uh, you, you're gonna make sure that the water is not running off, right, with the new driveway?
Yeah.
And they'll be able to do it. Who's doing the job? Is it an engineer, a professional?
It's gotta be professional.
Yeah, well, that's good. That's what we, that's what we like. Professionals doing the work.
It's gotta be the profession. I, I am do the carpentry, but, but it gotta be the foundation guy, or you gotta professional guy from, required from the city. Then give me a list, and then gotta do it.
Well, the thing is, we can grant it tonight, or, or we, we can, I hate to table it, uh-
No, so I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to table it. So, what I was doing was just do an approval with the stipulation that it's just gotta go through a quick review process. Let them re, let the building inspector review it, along with the board department, make sure that the runoff is, is adequate, and it just provides some reassurance to the neighbors that the runoff is not gonna be impacting their properties, that's all. And once they get the okay from the building department, it's, he's good to go.
And just one more question, uh, you getting water now, uh, in the summer?
I do, yeah, I do get water on, on rain. Really heavy rainy days, I get water. But what happened with me is I had to redirect my downspouts, and it worked out pretty well where I could control it. So, it's okay, but I have an old stone foundation, and the mortar is just deteriorated on it, so water comes in.
I can't, I can't tell, I can't tell that, because I might have the same age of his house, same, like, hundred years old. Then, back in the day, then they like, still pipes against the foundation, so that pipe doesn't work no more. That happened in my house, too. They go, they gotta get that up right to the pipe, and they go right to the foundation. But nothing came, nothing came from the land.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, you feel comfortable?
I'm okay with it, like I say, as long as, uh-
I gotta try and do the pitch that, that way some to my house, to my land, it's true, so that I explain to him that.
So, you, you know what you gotta do?
Yeah, I know what I gotta do.
And it's gonna be okay?
He said, no, I, I am-
Are you all right with that, huh? Okay, one more sec.
Motion?
I'd make the motion to, uh, have the site plan review after the fact, and if everything's satisfactory, let them go ahead with the project.
So, motion to grant the curb cut with the stipulation of a final review of the rain, stormwater runoff, um, from the driveway with the building inspector and water sewer department.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Deon, seconded by Counsel Palter. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no issues, we'll take items six and seven together. Uh, the resolution is in regards to flooding issues at fifty Anderson Street.
Should I make the motion to lift from the table?
Let's take item six. Resolution, uh, flooding issues at fifty Anderson Street, which was tabled September twenty-second, two thousand twenty. Motion to lift from the table was made by Counsel Deon.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Palter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted motion carries unanimously. Um, so, Mr. Farran? Do you, you want to come down, or you? Yeah, motion to take items, uh, six and seven together. Made by Counsel Deon, seconded by Counsel Palter. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted motion carries. So, does anybody on the council want to get started? I know Counsel Deon, you had mentioned that you want to get this back up, or do you want me to just kick it off?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Farran, I know we were here probably a year ago or so talking about this, so we left it on the table. Uh, can you just provide a quick update? I know there were some additional studies that were potentially gonna be taking place over there.
Well, so, as we talked about in the last meeting, um, you know, what really needs to be done out there is, is a full hydraulic study in the area, um, starting all the way, uh, Suckerbrook up towards, uh, Willie Metcalf Boulevard, running down through all the wetland areas, and then out eventually to South Wataupu Pond. It was, uh, you know, some identified, uh, potential grant funding, uh, to fund a study like that. Uh, none of those, uh, grant agencies, we, we haven't been able to secure any grants for those, uh, for those studies to be completed. I think probably one of the reasons that we, uh, are back here again is because of, uh, the six-and-a-half inches of rain that we had in six-and-a-half hours, um, a couple of, uh, weeks ago, uh, which, uh, which inundated the city, uh, and there was flooding throughout, uh, many areas of the city.
Mr. Ball, do you want to add anything, concerns, questions?
Well, you know, I've been complaining about this-
I'm sorry, can you just, apologize, state your name.
Fifty Anderson Street. I've been complaining about this since two thousand ten, you know, and it, and it's always the same excuse, you know? Uh, we had a lot of water in a short amount of time. Well, that's not fixing the problem for my house. I mean, what am I gonna keep doing? I mean, keep repairing my house over and over? I, I pay flood insurance, but it doesn't cover anything. So, I have to take money out of my pocket again, do all the repairs. I mean, or, or can I go after the city for it? You know, it, it's, it's a drainage problem. It's not because the, the pond is overflowing, it's a drainage problem. You know, I mean, Mr. Farran's been really good. He's, you know, he came back out there on a Saturday, check on my house and everything else, see how I was doing. You know, so he's, he's, you know, doing everything he can to try to help out the situation, you know, with what he has. I mean, you, let's face it, I mean, the city doesn't have the money to do any of this stuff. We're in a, you know, a deficit, and where's the money gonna come from? I understand that. But I can't keep taking money out of my pocket and putting my family through stress. And if the city wants to, you know, make an offer on my house, I mean, I have no reason to live in the city no more, you know, um.
So, Mr. Farran, what did you say the cost was in terms of trying to get some type of repair over there for the various ponds that you have?
Um, so, the original, what, uh, what we, uh, what was identified in the, uh, twenty-fifteen Integrated Stormwater Master Plan was three-point-two million dollars, uh, for the Dickerson Street area, um, back in twenty-eighteen, uh, when we came in front of, when we originally proposed an authorization to the council. I think it was picked up again in twenty-twenty. Uh, last time we had discussions, um, was, uh, three-point-two million dollars total cost. So, that included a conceptual design, um, for the, uh, Suckerbrook and, uh, Dickerson Street area. Because as I explained at the last meeting, it's a very big hydraulic system, uh, goes all the way back up to Hancock Street, Stafford- Because as I explained at the last meeting, it's a very big hydraulic system, uh, goes all the way back up to Hancock Street, Stafford Pond, um, and, and then comes down, um, you know, all the way, uh, there are, um, you know, throughout any type of system like that, that has had, uh, uh, industrial uses in the past and then, uh, now residential has, uh, moved closer and closer to the edge of those, um, um, wetland areas, uh, you know, during heavy, um, storms. Uh, people are gonna be impacted, you know, again, uh, I was out there, uh, with Mr. Ball, um, and in the last storm, after the last storm, uh, when, uh, his house was flooded, um, you know, there's multiple inches of, uh, of water throughout his house, uh, and his family was, was dealing with, with cleaning that out. You know.
How, how many, uh, residential homes are we, do we think estimate are, uh, be impacted by that?
So, in that particular area, the only one that I know that has had, uh, internal flooding damage would be Mr. Ball's in that area. I'm trying to think, back in two thousand, uh, back in two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, that was prior to my tenure, there may have been other structures, but I'm not, uh, I'm not certain when there was other structures.
In, in terms of repairs or, uh, infrastructure projects that are on your list, what, where does that rank in?
Uh, right, right now, uh, we're at the same point that, uh, we were last time, there's no funding in place, uh, to be able to move forward with, uh, with these, this project.
Now, we got thirty-two million dollars of opera, we're not having any structural deficits, we've got money just, you know, pouring in just like the rain, so.
And another fourteen million coming, don't forget the other fourteen million.
Are we, uh, are we anticipating, and I'm being facetious with that, obviously, it's not directed at you, um, is there, is there any potential for use of opera money?
Uh, I, this is a water sewer stormwater pro, well, a sewer stormwater project, uh, I feel that this would be eligible for opera funding.
Okay. Did you, Council Pelletier?
So, how many houses are affected with this water bomb on Anderson Street?
On Anderson Street, again, the only, uh, ones that I've, that I've seen affected is Mr. Ball's, um, I'm not aware of any other that have had any internal damage.
What kind of money are you talking to fix that? Is that a big figure that you mentioned?
Uh, three point two million is what was estimated within the, uh, integrated plan that was done in twenty fifteen.
And that has to be done?
Uh, so that would fix the, uh, fix the drainage issue as it flows down, um, because, because essentially, you know, as I explained last time we were here, there's different potential restrictions or areas that have been sedimented up, um, as it goes through closed culverts, through the mill complex and through other areas, uh, that would have to be looked at to see, um, whether, uh, there's any fix. You know, the first step, again, would be, uh, hydraulic model and an engineering study to look at that stream, to see whether there's any, um, you know, low cost, high value, um, you know, corrections that could be done. Uh, you know, but just, just one thing to say about it, though, you, you still have to think, the storm that we had, uh, recently, you know, Mr. Ball was, was affected, was over a hundred year storm. We had six and a half inches of rain in six and a half hours. The hundred year storm, uh, for us is, um, just under five inches of rain within six hours. So, we were well above the hundred year storm. A- and I know everybody says, well, we just had a hundred year storm. The hundred year storm is a probability. You know, it, it's just statistical analysis of what the recurrence of that storm would be. It doesn't say that, mean that the storm's gonna happen every one hundred years. It's, it's a, it's an, an analysis that was done. You know, these charts were done, um, by the Navy in the, in their TR forty reports, uh, and that's where these storm, uh, occurrences come from. Um, so we, you know, it, it, the Navy's reports only go up to the hundred year storm, which is just.
Let, let me stop you a little bit there, because you can go all night, I know you.
Yeah, sorry.
Pulling out, uh, everything shows, all kinds of cartoons or whatever, but the, the thing is, the thing is, you talk about three point two million and we're talking one house, his house. Why don't we just buy the damn thing? I mean, he's been, what, two oh five? When'd you start having trouble?
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten.
Again, in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, and then again, just recently.
Right, nothing's been done.
You know, uh, again, that I, that, if that's an option that the council would like to explore.
Better than spending, uh, three point two?
You know, if that, if that's an option that the council would like to explore and would like to look at funding, again, that's, that's something that, that could be done.
Like I said, I don't have a reason to live in the city anymore. I just lost my brother-in-law and my mother-in-law, so.
Yes, so, listen, I, I recognize that, but I don't know that the city wants to get into the, uh, real estate business of just buying people's homes, so I think.
Well, the whole thing is, is the city liable for the, and responsible for, for the damage that he's getting? I mean, it's gotta have some responsibility, the city. I mean, they let someone build a house there and now he's having trouble. I mean, you know, that's on us.
I don't, I don't disagree. I think we've had this conversation with planning and, and subdivisions being, you know, pushed through without the proper, uh, review process and we have flooding throughout and unfortunately, we've, we've lived next to a, a number of ponds, a number of rivers that are really kinda driving some of this and our infrastructure is not where it needs to be, so I, I think, you know, this, in one specific area, if we're gonna be dealing with that, then we're talking about, uh, Whitefield Street, right? We're, we're talking about purchasing twenty, thirty homes, right?
Yeah, we got straightened out now.
So they say, right? And so then, then we're talking about, we're talking about, uh, Stafford Square that floods out all the time, so we're talking about businesses and homes, so, you know, I just don't want to get into a situation where we, we create a precedent and we're, we're purchasing a process of land as opposed to dealing with the real issue is, is addressing the infrastructure that we've been talking about dealing with, the, the drainage systems and, and, you know, whatever, whatever else goes into, um, you know, the stormwater maintenance of, of all this rainwater. So, with that being said, I, I, I mean, from my standpoint, I, I think we've got a number of issues that revolve around stormwater and hundred year storms from Stafford Square, Anderson Street, so, I for one would like to, you know, maybe potentially see a report of, um, a list of items or a list of properties that have, have to be fixed or remediated in terms of either, um, catch basins or stormwater interceptors or, or whatever it may be, uh, to rectify, rectify just not the flooding on Anderson Street, but, um, Stafford Square, because I've already requested some information, still haven't received it, I'll be asking the administration for it again. But I think we need to, as a council, start talking about this opera money funding, the one-time money that's coming in and, and truly utilizing it uh, for projects that we have not been able to get to that are really negatively impacting the quality of life for residents, like Mr. Ball, right? Um, and in the meantime, in terms of, how much would it cost for an engineering review just, uh, to do the modeling to figure out whether or not a, a true hydraulic interceptor or whatever is that you, you mentioned that you need to get down there, or if there's an easier solution or a, a cheaper solution to, to maintain some of the flooding, even if it, even if it's not the hundred year storm and it gets you to the fifty year storm or whatever it may be?
So, originally back in, uh, two thousand eighteen, when we put this budget together, uh, it was, uh, two hundred thousand. You know, at this point, I, I would like to increase that a bit just due to increases, uh, increased costs of all, uh, work. You know, even just trying to get, uh, trying to get, um, surveys or anybody out there to be able to do that work. Um, one other thing that I'd probably be looking to do with this is, uh, potentially involve one of the, uh, well, what I'd like to do in my mind is try to use one of the local universities for some of the work too.
Okay.
I still got the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I, can I interrupt you? Terrible chairman. Council Pelletier, you still have the floor.
Thank you. What's the solution for him? Keep on bailing out the water? Gotta have a solution here somewhere.
So, I, I know Mr. Ball has, uh, has made some plans to, uh, uh, modify his, his house.
Correct, close off the garage and put a, uh, a system in to block the doorway, but, you know, that stills not fixing the problem, you know what I mean, I understand, you know what I mean? Like I said, I know, that's why I asked, you know, to have it withdrawn because I felt bad for the people on White, Whitefield Street, more than myself and my family. And that's my biggest problem, I always feel bad for other people and I have to stop feeling bad for other people and stop worrying about my own family. And, you know, like I said, you know, maybe if they bought that land on the side of me, you know, it just turned into a big retention pond. I mean, I might not get as much water, but I know I still might get water, but, you know, I mean, I know the guy offered it to me for fifteen thousand dollars, it's almost, I think it's like twelve thousand square feet, so it's, I mean, I don't know if it could be turned into a retention pond or what, but the school itself, you know, they bought those retention ponds and the engineer said, oh, you know, that could have no problems, they're overfilling every single time, we have big rainstorms. And I still have the big problem with the plow drivers. Every time they go down there, they plow the end of the street and then we have rain afterwards, it comes right back up into my house. I mean, not, um, I forgot what year it is, I'll have to go back and look at my video, my, uh, photos, but they had to come down there with a big front end loader because my house was flooded, because they blocked it off. Now, I know these guys have, you know, million dollar liability insurance on them, right? So, I mean, my next action now is just leave it like it is, let them plow it in and then have a lawsuit against them and go after them for damages to my property, because it happens over and over and over again, I have to go out there and tell the guys. Last guy came down, he, he ran over a barrel, well, he went up the street, he seen the barrel, he stopped, I even put a sign up there, please do not block, you know, don't block it, you know, because, um, a flood zone, so he went up the street, I got it on video and I can show anybody that wants it. Came back down, backed over the vid, uh, the barrel, took off, came back and then plowed the barrel in, then he tells me, I didn't see the barrel. I'm like, you, you know you seen the barrel, you went up the street and, and tried to avoid it and then you came back down and ran a, plowed it completely in.
Right.
So, I had to shovel it all out, so it don't, you know, you, they can't dam it, they dam it and that's the biggest problem.
Mr. Pelletier?
Yeah, I guess it no solution here tonight, but I'm gonna yield the floor, thank you.
Council Dion?
Yes, I guess my question was gonna be, the study that you're talking about is a far larger amount of land than just discussing Mr. Ball's house.
Correct, yeah, it involves, it involves a large, large area.
So, there's no area that that water can be directed to, to, to take it away from his property?
No, it's, it's tough. I did bring my map, I wanted not to bring it out.
I knew it.
I wanna make sure, uh, everybody, I'm just. Yes, uh, Mr. Ball's property is right here at the end of Anderson Street, Anderson Street, Dupree is small, that end, Endicott. This is Dickerson Street here, the Atlantis Charter School, Route twenty-four here, Stafford Road over here, just orient everybody. As the water comes down Sucker Brook, uh, it comes down into these lower flat areas. You know, the problem that Mr. Ball has is the water from this area in the back and this area, as this water rises, uh, it comes and it comes into the end of his street, I think probably the end of his street, the last rainstorm was maybe three feet deep, um, down over next to the wood line, uh, in this area, uh, was roughly about eight inches, um, around the house, correct?
Yeah, about eight inches.
Yeah, six, eight inches around, around the house, um, which, you know, with his style, house raised ranch with the garage level, um, the water goes right into, uh, right into the house. This area here, I think is the area that Mr. Ball was just talking about, the problem is the elevation within here def, uh, you know, starts coming up and up all the way up to Dickerson Street.
Yeah, it does go up more.
Right, so that elevation rises. So, to take, you know, you're talking, if this is getting flooded here, all of this area, the water's also high. So, to take, you, you know, six or eight inches off of this whole entire area, you're talking a lot of water that you'd have to displace, you know, and move into a retention or detention area, uh, and then discharge it back into it. So, it's not just the water, you can't just take the water here and move it somewhere else.
Right.
You have to take all the water from this whole area.
Right, because the flooding issue isn't strictly the amount of water coming from the sky and pooling, it's water coming to the house, uh, the water level of, of being hot, the ta, water table being high and then the rain in addition to it.
Yeah, exactly. You have all the water from Hancock Street coming down through the cemetery, all of that comes down this way. Stafford Pond all the way into Tiven, Rhode Island, runs off into Sucker Brook, all comes down this way. So, it's, it's, you know, and I definitely understand the point that you're trying to say, is there some way where we can, you know, put a detention or retention to take that particular, but you're talking a lot bigger, a lot bigger area of water that you have to deal with in just that one spot.
And nothing can be built up against the foundation or anywhere around the house, um, like some type of perimeter to hold, to hold the water back at all?
Well, again, Mr., as, as we just talked about, um, Mr. Ball did, uh, he built a new garage, uh, on the corner of his property, which is elevated.
I raised it up home.
Yeah, it wasn't, right, wasn't affected by the water. He has a garage door, which is right at ground level, that comes in from the side of his driveway. Uh, his plan is to, uh, block that off and, and make that a watertight, uh, area on the bottom, uh, and then do a, uh, a water, try to do watertight well around his entry door, which is also at grade level, uh, which will give, you know, probably a foot of, uh.
About two feet, it'd be two feet before the water gets to the house at that point.
So then.
But it's more money out of my pocket again.
Well, I was just gonna say, so then I would think at the least, perhaps there's some type of funding to aid him in that as opposed to him having to, um, absorb the cost of that.
Um, I, you know.
I mean, the fact that, you know, it's coming from areas that he can't control, we can't control, but, I mean, I don't even know why they allowed a house to be built there to begin with, but then we just start that same discussion, Whitefield Street, this one. You drain a lake and build a house, I mean, it's absurd, um.
I didn't know that that was all wetlands, and I, I knew it was wetlands, but I didn't know that they filled it in before I bought the home. You know, they filled it all in to bring it up more, and then the same contractor built, you know, the same guy who built my house built the house on the side of it, when he built his house, he raised it up higher. But I mean, Leo, you've been on the council for years, have you ever heard of flooding in that area before, my property? From, you know, all the neighbors I talked to, they never had a problem with that flooding like it is now.
Well, I, I think you used to have flooding on Dickerson Street right over the, uh, right there, yeah.
Yes, but I'm saying that my, my property itself flooding, yeah, not Dickerson Street, but the next street over. I mean, that the whole street had to be completely repaired over there, right? It was all ripped up, you know, it got destroyed from the storm.
Yeah, during the storm, that culvert washed out and was, uh, in poor condition and rotted, rotted away, it was a steel culvert that's by Spencer Street washed out, uh, you know, you know, the problem is, is any of things along with one of these water bodies, as residential or other construction moves closer and closer, you know, it, areas where you didn't have anything affected before, there wasn't a house there and now they're moving closer and closer to that edge, pushing the edge and those are new properties.
Right, right up, the, the next street up from me, they just built five houses and the city allowing to build a five houses.
That's a one problem.
So, now all that runoff water, of course, where's it going? Into the pond, to my house, and we have heavy rain.
And like you say, I get you can't buy every house, but past practice, haven't homes been purchased before because of situations like this?
Hyacinth Street?
Well, I, I think that was to put something in.
Right, Hyacinth Street, there was two properties bought that were to install infrastructure on those properties, not to, um, not to purchase the property because the property was flooding, it was because we needed those properties to actually install structure to deal with the drainage.
And there's nothing moving forward that this could fall into a similar category?
This particular property really doesn't, um, you know, again, it's, it's not just this property and something can be done here to portray the water, it's this larger area, you know, this down here is potentially where the issues would, would be.
But if you go up the street a little bit more, where Endicott Street comes completely down, it's a dirt road that went all the way down there. Right, that's a, there's a paper road that went across, that went down.
Down here?
Yeah, down there. So, if you go up a little bit more, where it broke through, you go up there where it's all, um, opened up, there's no, there's like no water up there at all. So. Right here, Dickerson Street, Endicott comes all the way down, but up here, right about here somewhere, is where all this here, you go in here, there's like no water at all. From here down, it, it all floods up because it broke through somewhere around here in that two thousand ten storm. So, instead of staying in that stream, it does, it comes over and floods this whole tight area out now, and it never did that before.
So, what changed?
I think from the two thousand ten storm, that second round is what broke through on that because it was just so much rain.
Was there a dam there originally or something like that?
No, it's just the, it's just the stream that goes through.
No, no, nothing through this area, this is just a channel, a naturally channelized stream that, that makes its way through there. You know, it could be, uh, off, you know, and this is blue, it's just highlighted to show, to show where the extremely wet areas are.
But that stream runs all the way down, goes into a pond and runs from that pond into Bleach Tree Pond, which, I believe this is the Bleach Tree Pond right there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so another area runs into this one. Yeah, so another area runs into this one, then I guess drains into this one.
Right, so it comes right through here.
The problem is, that stream is like so narrow now, that it's just, it can't handle the water, it's just too much water.
Yeah, but, you know, this whole entire area running all the way down, these.
Yeah, correct.
The areas were maxed out during that rainstorm.
Right, it's just too much water, it's just.
As you said, you had, it was issued where Spencer Street washed out, the Dickerson, the new Dickerson Street crossing that was installed by.
And down now, you had that casino, the casino went in place, and all that overflow water is going into the same place, it's going into this stream, and then coming down here, and Ball River has to deal with it.
So can I just, we're just running into the ordinance subcommittee meeting, so just to wrap it up, since there are no solutions, can I, can we table this, and can I can I just ask maybe the water sewer department just to go through to see that, if you can potentially walk that, to see if there's anything, any blockage or any cleanup that might need to take place in that little stream?
It's tough, it's really tough to walk it.
No, I I know, but.
It's a lot of rise and everything else.
Maybe that's part of the problem. Right?
Yeah.
Maybe that's part of the problem, and if it were cleaned out, it it, the problem might not be as significant.
It's it's a naturalized channel, it's it's not anything that, you know, we wanted and if it channelized or something like that, but I'll walk the channel.
Yeah.
I'll see what the, what.
And then obviously, we've, we've got to follow conservation, I know that's, it's a wetland, so the cleanup is a little bit limited in terms of what we can do, but.
Yeah, something like this, I would definitely contact Bristol County Mosquito Control to potentially use their resources if there is some type of issue with their, in this area.
Can we put a timeline on that?
Um, yes, I'll entertain a motion.
Maybe the electric company can do something, too, 'cause of power lines?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, when when I go out there, too, I'll contact you, Mr. Ballow, maybe if you're available.
It's it's tough to walk back there. It's very tough.
I know, I've been through there once, many years ago, it's been a while, though, so I'll contact you and see if you wanna go out there with me.
So if we were to give you a timeline of, say, to come back to us, March, is that a fair timeline for both of you?
I've I've been dealing with it for this long, so.
I know, for eleven years, what's a few more months, right?
So it's just gotta, it's just gotta be coordinated with the, obviously, the wet season and things of that nature, so you gotta wait for it to, you know, to dry out a little bit, so that they can actually walk through it and actually see if there's any real issues.
Mr. Philin's answered all my questions, I call him, you know, he responds promptly. I have no problems with communication with him whatsoever, and like I said, I know his hands are tied with what he has, so it's nothing at all against him whatsoever. I know the sixth floor probably doesn't wanna put out the money, you know, like I said, you get thirty-four million dollars, you got another thirty-four million dollars coming next year, but I can't feel sorry, like I said, I can't feel sorry for everybody else, I gotta stop feeling sorry for my family.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, you go, ladies first, that's you.
So I would make a motion that we definitely look into that and see if something can assist in with the problem.
Motion to have the water department walk the, what's the name of that brick?
Sucker Brook.
Sucker Brook, channel to see if there's any blockage, and to come back to the ordinance committee by the end of March. Motion was made by Councilor Deon, seconded by Councilor Pelletier, discussion?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. I know we took items six and seven. Yeah, so can we?
One more question?
Okay.
Would it be worth also making a motion that perhaps it could be put on the list or be one of the items that the administration would look at in terms of you using OPER funding to to, for this hydraulic study, et cetera?
There's a motion to send a letter to the administration requesting that the industry, Anderson Street flooding be considered for OPER funds.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Deon, seconded by Councilor Pelletier, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries unanimously. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table, item six and seven was made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Councilor[1783.50]